All the meeting to order, this is the Monday, the 22nd meeting of the Barrington Select Board. Call to order, roll call.
Article present.
Gibson here.
Supers here.
Cabby yellow here. So let's begin with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gender review. Well, I know that we have a couple of additions. Like to add a late item, which is around the mobile radio communication or emergency communications capital reserve would like to be able to use some of the monies there for the planned expense to upgrade the mobile radios in emergency response vehicles. I'd like to put that on set agenda. Everyone's in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
And I would like to remove from the consent agenda, item F. And we will discuss that under new business.
I agree to that.
Rob, you agree to that?
I do, yes.
Any other things?
Wasn't there, were there two online? There's another one being removed from the consent agenda.
Um, looking forward, it's comfortable, I'd like to add A through C to the consent agenda.
Appointments A through C, yes.
I'm good.
Very comfortable with that after last week's discussion. What about, do you feel that you want to add D as well? Cause I would feel comfortable adding D as well.
That's just that.
Well, we're not going to vote this time again, okay.
Vote into it.
Very good.
Okay, let's make sure everyone's clear now the class six roads. So um, uh, Virg Lane is not on the consent agenda.
Because it's being discussed separately.
Yes.
Good, alright, good.
Um, meetings are open in the public, but public meetings limited. If you wish to be heard, please note that there we all have two public comment meetings, one now and one at the near the end of the meeting. In addition, public hearings may be scheduled for public comment on specific matters. Speakers must be residents of the town of Barrington, property owners in the town of Barrington, and or designated representatives of recognized civic organizations or businesses located in the town of Barrington. When they are addressed and permitted to speak by the chair, speakers first need to give their name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the chair and the select board as opposed to not to any individual person. Each speaker is provided a single opportunity to comment, which is limited to three minutes. Public comment should be important for tonight. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, select board, and or the town administrator. The chair will reserve strict order and department all select board meetings. I've seen violent disorder that disorderly comments are those likely to induce violence, disrunking, or disorder, and not for example, and will not be tolerated. Complaints regarding town staff should be directed to the town administrator. Public comment is open.
If you're participating virtually and you'd like to make a comment, you can raise your hand using the Teams feature, or if you're participating on the phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Speak up, wait to be recognized by the chair.
Looks like we have no public comment.
I don't see.
Okay, let's move along. Um, public hearings and invited guests, this is always a pleasure for select board. Uh, Michelle Libby is being promoted to police sergeant tonight. Do you want to come over? She's out there in the hall, you got to go tell her.
Dan's going to take better. So thank you for letting us do this again, uh, as has become habit with Chief Williams and I've continued it because I think it's important. Anytime we have a higher promotion, we like to re swear and repin the officer involved. So it's poignant. Officer Libby was hired by Sergeant, by Sergeant Chief Williams, but I had a large part in that process. So to promote another one that I have grown up with is certainly important. Um, so Michelle was hired by the town of Barrington in August 2016. I did that from memory. Uh, she's a graduate from the New Hampshire Police Academy, April 21, 2017. So there's a little bit of overlap there. Since that time, Michelle has been a big part of EPD. She's taken on a lot of roles. Key to that, she stepped up and took over the dare program after Lieutenant Bannion left. She's going to be handing that off shortly, but she did a fantastic job keeping it in the interim. After we lost other staff, Michelle stepped up and took over the evidence room with Deputy Chief. That was a huge undertaking. The evidence room was one of those areas where we had significant problems and the two of them have made it incredibly OCD. Anybody can step in that room right now and take it over from scratch, do an inventory and work on, which is exactly what's going to happen at this point in time now that she's assuming other duties. Sergeant Libby's always been fast to assist in staff coverage. She's one of our overtime people, as Connor can attest to. When we see shift overtime, Michelle's always been one of the ones that grabs it and she's always been ensuring that her peers are taken care of. She embodies the ethical values of our profession in general and is a credit to our department. And I'm happy that she's finally being promoted. So apparently I'm calling her father up. Once I swear that now Sergeant, her dad is going to pin her. I am Michelle Libby.
Michelle Libby.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly, sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties.
Actually discharge all the duties.
And comment upon me as a patrol sergeant.
As a patrol sergeant.
For the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
The town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This I do under the pains, penalties, and perjury.
So do under the pains, penalty, perjury.
Done.
Uh, moving on, school board liaison report, I don't think there's anyone here to speak. As long as I see issuance of a building permit on Virg Lane of private, so Mary Elliott, that one seventeen, lot eight.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing Ms. Mary Elliott, here this evening. Uh, she owns a property at sixty-three Virg Lane, known as tax map one seventeen lot eight. Uh, we're asking for a waiver to the class six private road policy. She owns a, uh, structure that's, um, full-time use. Uh, the existing staircase, as she's pointed out in her application, is a spiral staircase. Uh, a couple of people have been hurt traveling up and down that staircase and she'd like to put a standard case in uh, so that she can use it as her permanent residence. To do that, because of the header at the top of the stairs, need to raise the roof on the structure. And because of that, uh, elevational change, uh, category three is being imposed on, uh, Mary as an expansion of volume. I would point out that when you read the policy, um, preceding the word volume uh, discusses occupancy load, uh, changes in seat from seasonal use to full-time use, uh, expansions from single family to duplex or multifamily. Other uses that would imply additional, uh, burden on the road, private road, additional burden on class six roads, and this gets to private road. Additional burdens on, uh, safety, uh, life safety, uh, services and activities getting to and from the structure. Uh, and I would point out that the proposed, uh, building permit does none of those things. It increases the amount of volume by increasing the roof uh, to allow for a proper staircase to be installed in a structure, which in itself, uh, increases the life safety aspects uh, of the structure. Um, I was at the planning board, I was present, uh, during the presentation of the planning boards on the planning board, uh, voted to deny the waiver, uh, or deny the recommendation to the, uh, select board for the waiver. Um, I think that conversation got really, uh, hung up on the dollar value that would be associated with uh, denying the waiver from class three to class one. Uh, got really hung up on what would happen, uh, with the approximately twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, where it would go, what could be done. Uh, I think the, our point and the reason for the request for the waiver is that that word volume should not apply in this particular instance. We're not increasing the burden, uh, that this, uh, resident, that this, uh, structure, that this home places on, uh, services on the roadway. And so that's the basis for the waiver request. Um, if the board, uh, chooses not to grant the waiver, uh, based on the grounds that volume is being uh, misapplied, uh, in that instance, uh, we would respectfully request the board to grant a waiver based on the fact that the road agent has uh, supplied a basic narrative that says that most of this roadway currently meets the private road standard and that there are small things that could be done, uh, to improve that standard, all of which, uh, we would consider generally maintenance. We would not be able to add a turnaround at the end of the roadway. There's no spot, uh, to place a turnaround. Uh, widening, uh, in most instances can't be done, uh, due to vegetation that's along the edge and due to the fact that that's on private property. Uh, there are a few potholes, uh, within the paved surface. Again, that's maintenance, that's not the purpose of, uh, the reason that this policy has been instituted by this board and the, uh, the residents of the town of Barrington. Um, so I guess with that, I think I'll be trying to answer any questions that you have. Mary's here to answer any questions that you might have, uh, moving forward.
Did you say Mary lives there full-time or the staircase would allow for full-time?
The stair, the, uh, use is full-time currently. Um, so it's, it's not a, it's not a camp being converted to a full-time home. It's a full, it's a full-time home now. Um, it will allow for, I mean, better use of the second floor for Mary.
Do you know when the potholes are going to get fixed in the north?
I have no knowledge when the potholes will be fixed. Cause the reason why I ask that is if there's a pothole there and, you know, there's not a plan of action to take on it. Since, you know, we're bringing up life safety for fire EMS to potentially get somebody up on the second floor. If something happens up there, um, you know, that gets, uh, run out, flooded out. Um, we can potentially have an issue with a fire truck or an EMS vehicle.
So I do know that the, um, the road association is robust. Uh, there are, uh, funds available for, uh, maintenance of the roadway. Um, but again, I would point out that, uh, these monies are not supposed to be used for, uh, maintenance. They're supposed to be used for life safety, uh, improvements.
Would the ministry like to support bench, actually, to handle the discussion?
So very quick question. It appears based on the drawings that we're seeing that the only thing that is happening with this is the stairwell change and the ability to walk up the stairwell without using spiral.
That's correct.
Everything on the upper level remains the same.
That's correct.
The twenty-five thousand dollars was quoted from a builder?
Yeah.
Or just, okay. Wow, okay.
But we have to pop the top off the muffin.
Understood.
Raise it, change the header situation and then put the stairs.
Okay.
So it's.
But the rest of the roof line won't remain.
That's correct.
Exactly as it is.
I don't know, I don't. I'm not here to make, I don't know. We didn't get a recommendation from the planning board. There's one, one way to look at it, but you know, and at the same time, it's, it's safety. Um, you know, and I go down on the land, I don't think any other family members are going. It's not added volume to master bedroom or to, you know, an in-law suite. Um, you know, and it's kind of life safety at this point, so I don't know how the rest of you feel, but.
I, I, from, from another perspective, it would be about a fifth of that twenty-five hundred dollar fee to bring this before ZBA and to review the five criteria and, um, based on what it's being used for would most likely meet that. So, um, I think in order to do what would be considered substantial justice in this case, you would want to allow the person to access their second level with safety.
Right.
You would.
So the discussion at planning board was that, um, you know, we do have a written policy and that would fall under category three. So it says additions that add to the volume of an existing building under category three. So that was where there was, um, discussion why there was not a, um, agreement of the planning board. It there, yeah, the planning board did not send a recommendation for it to be a category.
Yeah.
I would suggest that the reason we talk about volume increases is because presumably that would indicate increased occupancy.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't. I don't know that that's exactly, that's kind of my interpretation.
What talks about volume in foot?
With no change in footprint, the volume doesn't, in this case, doesn't add sufficient traffic in the area, I guess, is the point. On, on the other hand, I mean, suggest the other side of this too, is the purpose of our class six and private road games. There's not so much the traffic flow through there, but to make sure that the roads, um, are safe and accessible to emergency services. In this case, I don't think it makes too much difference if we can't put a turnaround at the end of it. Not sure what we can do.
So I'm clarification, the road agent in, uh, somewhere in the materials indicated that a turnaround would be about the only thing that could be done to that road.
Well, with the fire chief's suggestion.
Fire chief.
I believe that, and then the point you just made is there's no place to put that turnaround. But I'm not actually been down there to look at that. Not sure how that would work. He said that there was vegetation, you know, it was, I don't know.
Do you want to comment?
Uh, yeah, just as a point of clarification, the fire chief, not, I know he's in the room, he is, but the fire chief's had no comment on this particular, uh, application and.
Thanks to road agent, I'm sorry.
The, the road agent did have comment. Uh, and, but the road agent also pointed out that the majority of this roadway meets the policy. Um, and so, um, in review of the Virg Lane right-of-way, uh, and the road layout through there, there is no room. There's, it's not like there's a dedicated area for a cul-de-sac that just never got built. There's no room, it comes down and literally ends at somebody's house. So, um, the installation of that, uh, is impossible without other, uh, other improvements.
Is the total square footage being added to allow for this, um, U-shaped, um, staircase?
Uh, I don't know, I don't know the square footage, cause the outer square footage of the house isn't changing. It, when we talk about volume, it's three-dimensional volume, so the cubic footage of the house is increasing slightly.
So the outer square footage of the building is not changing at all?
I would, I, I would lean on, you know, the right decision in my eyes would be to allow it because one, we're talking about when the toddler not out, uh, no other rooms are being really affected to where you could add extra occupants in. Um, I definitely think this leads to a gray area, um, you know, or, um, in our policies. And, you know, if there's, if the road meets it, our, the road policy points away and then you can't do anything on top of it anywhere. They're, we're between a rock and hard spot, so I would, I would vote to approve this. I move that we grant them a waiver. Oh, wait, there's.
Okay, that's public comment first, uh, the public hearing, so.
Public comment, the meeting is not open for public comment on this issue? So would you like to come up here to your podium and state your name and address?
Yep.
So I'm Barry Vader and I live at fifty-five Virg Lane, actually right next to, uh, uh, Mary Elliott. And I just wanted to comment to Jim on the road. In the fall, we actually fill the potholes. They've got created this winter just more because we have it plowed. So they kind of, the plow kind of scraped some of that, what we've filled in off. So we would typically be doing that come the spring, summer, because our goal obviously is to make sure it's always very clean going into the winter because it just gets destroyed if we don't.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Do you have anyone online who would like to comment?
So, I don't see. I, I agree with everything that was said and Jim, especially from the safety standpoint and, um, as a board member, and if I were to want to be pragmatic, I would want to support the waiver. And, but I think at the moment, the way that the, the planning board rejected it and for the reason that the way the, the policy is written and until we get the policy revised, which I'm looking forward to that happening, where we can hopefully make for more accommodations that spell and sift through these kinds of challenges. I think that I'm just going to have to say no, just based on the wording of the policy and all the flack that we as a board received when we went against the written policy in the past.
That was my position, thank you.
My position is that there is no increase in the actual volume and the fact that there, other than height, you're not increasing the square footage of the property. And, um, I think based on the fact that it is not increasing the square footage of the property and is not fundamentally changing the usage of it. I would be inclined to grant the waiver.
I, I move that we grant waiver for this. I'm, I'm, I have to describe the whole thing, but I wouldn't re-describe it.
Board, um, uh, Virg Lane private road, Mary Elliott, that one seventeen, lot eight.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Make a motion to approve the waiver request and authorize the issuance of a building permit for map one seventeen, lot eight, on Virg Lane.
That's what I said.
Is there a second? Second, okay.
I, I would agree.
Yeah, reluctantly, no, just based on policy.
You check, yes, Supers.
Cabby yellow, no, certainly not scary. Um, next, the item evidence of important energy.
Moment of church.
Alright, so, so we're joined by Paul Panish, uh, who you all know, you appointed to the energy committee. After that point, uh, the energy committee itself elected him as chair. Um, also in the audience, we have Dan Federico, member of the energy committee, uh, vice chair. And so they have a presentation, I was supposed to have it on the phone pulling up, and I have a printed copy of that presentation, uh, that was on your desk here. And behind that printed presentation, as you follow, follow along, is the joint, uh, draft and the joint powers agreement, uh, which I probably get into more specifically. Or if you can put one that's.
I don't know why, but here, controls are right there, they're not showing on my screen, is there any?
Okay, oh, that's a good question. Is it clicked? That might just advance the slide. It is kind of weird that that's there. Um, if you want to start, I can pull up the presentation and just send it from mine.
That would be fine. It won't be public hearing? We almost had it, Connor.
Almost, almost, way in the back of plan, so.
We were working on this this afternoon and everything went great by the way.
Oh no, isn't that funny?
You've got it too. Okay, well, let's ignore that. I'll begin. My name is Paul Panish, uh, one-on-one Ross Road. I am chair of the energy committee. We were formed by the select board, I believe, in November. And, uh, I was voted in as chair early this year. Um, and we, we've taken on a number of issues. Our primary goal this year was to work on what I'm presenting today, which is a community power aggregation preliminary outline for you. Um, if you have any questions for me in the course of the presentation, please interrupt because it is complicated, we'll be covering a lot of different issues and we'll tend to lose things if we try to save it to the end. I can't guarantee you that I'll be able to answer your questions. The underlying documents are quite complex and lengthy, but I will investigate them and I will come up with answers for you. Again, I may rely on you, uh, for some of this, if I think you might have an answer and I don't. Um, so you can, you can, great. Community power aggregation has been extinct in this country in a number of states for quite a period of times, uh, since the nineties at least. Um, it's known by different names in different areas. You may have heard it referred to as community choice aggregation. In New Hampshire, it was enabled as a function of RSA fifty-three E, which was passed in the late nineties. Um, it allowed for a competitive energy supply in the New Hampshire market. It has not been widely taken on for a number of reasons. The primary one was most likely the opt-in nature of the legislation, which meant that people had to specifically opt in. Most people are not aware of this, have not been educated about it. And it has, it did not get wide, widespread acceptance, though there has been from independent power providers, some acceptance over the course of time. RSA fifty-three was amended by HB three fifteen a couple of years ago. And this specifically allowed for municipal power aggregations, um, which could be created on an opt-out basis. Now, individual customers would still retain, excuse me, second. Individual customers still retain the option of remaining with EverSource as their, their energy provider, um, if they opt out. And likewise, if they have an existing alternative provider, they would stay with that provider. They would not be preempted from that provider.
They don't have to do anything, they're just.
If they have an alternative energy provider, they don't have to do anything, nothing will change for them. If they're currently with EverSource and they don't choose to opt, opt out, they will be into the community power aggregation program. Um, the bill that you're currently getting from EverSource, um, will still be provided by EverSource as it has been in the PETS. Um, the bill is split into two parts, supply and, um, supplier delivery charges, uh, and energy charges. You'll, this is still what you'll see, the only difference being that the energy supplier will now be the Barrington Community Power Aggregation. And I don't know exactly what the text would be for that, but there will be something to that effect on your bill. Um, so the first group of ten pounds to implement this, um, launched early this month. Since the town is not a member, I am not kept abreast of the actual, how this went. Um, EverSource. EverSource had some procedural issues which were contrary to the legislation, but which basically did throw a last minute wrench into the works. There were, there were two towns that were involved at the time. Nashua had sixty six thousand people that were going to be enrolled. There was another small town with something like sixty customers. It was only the sixty customers that were going to be enrolled. They did a trade. Nashville was enrolled at that time. I don't know how it's gone since then. But I do know that the fertile launch did enroll in its initial stage roughly sixty five thousand customers. The total base of, this is then being done through the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. That's what we're proposing at this time. The total membership in that organization that this town is now thirty three towns. It represents roughly twenty five percent of the state's population. And it's on target to be one of the largest electricity suppliers in New Hampshire. Instead of the single rate plan, which you're familiar with under EverSource, community power aggregation would allow customers to select. It would be default plan. And there are three additional plans with different choices in energy supply. Those choices may be expanded in the future. We would be deciding to go with the lowest as our default. It would be up to customers to opt into any other plan that they desire. Some of the other features what the Community Power Coalition offers are project assistance. As part of that, members can buy into shares of other member projects. So if other towns have decided to put in a large solar array, for example, for municipal or residential purposes, Barrington could take part in that in a percentage manner. And this is one of the services you can go over others, which is offered by the Coalition.
Are you going to touch on later what it's going to do to existing customers with existing arrays?
With, I'm sorry.
Is this some solar arrays?
As it's initially being implemented, that really doesn't play a role. There is, so we'll go over the rate structure in another slide. There's certain minimum requirements that the state has for renewable contributions. And so the lowest, the lowest rate plan would meet that requirement. And from there, you can step up to others. It may be provided by a combination of wind, solar and others. This slide is provided by the Retail Energy Supply Association. And I just wanted to give you some kind of an indication of what choice is done in the energy market. It's a little bit hard to come up with numbers on this. There's many different kinds of energy choice. This was the best I could do. And what it shows is how prices have been affected as a function of communities that have choice versus monopoly or states which have choice versus monopoly. I have some questions about this. I don't know what New Hampshire was considered. Technically, we did have choice, but it was not widely taken up by the population. I don't know how that's represented in this slide. So for what this is worth, you can see the the discrepancy between communities that have offered choice and those that have not in terms of savings. And it has been substantial. It represents a over twenty eight percent spread between those two. And this obviously isn't a guarantee of how community aggregation would perform here. But it's the best indication I can give you of how it has performed on a national basis today.
What did the different color stars mean?
This one, nothing. So this slide was shows the towns that had joined the Coalition as of, I believe I put this together in in March or something like that. Since then, there's been six more towns that have joined. Bosco, in Berlin, Randolph, Rollinsford, Lyme and Strath. So it is getting up there. The first rollout, which started earlier this month, was ten town. There will be a second stage later in the year, and there'll be another rollout following that. There's been a number of articles like this. This one appeared in Foster's. You may have seen it. I just thought since Dover is such a close community, it might be of interest for you. This isn't Foster's. You can look it up. Okay, so these are. Is it James or Jim? Jim, yeah, okay. This is the slide I was referring to. This shows the introductory rates that are that the Coalition has come out with. This is compared to the EverSource rate, which is, I believe, twenty point two cents or something like that. I believe, yes. So you can see that the rate is being offered as valid through July of this this year. One of the features of the Coalition is that rates will update more frequently than they have with EverSource. EverSource is limited to twice a year. Their negotiations are limited on that basis. I'm not sure why this is. I assume it's a regulatory issue. But that has been part of the reason why rates have gone up so quickly and and have stayed up. One important point to note is that launches will not take place unless the Coalition can offer a rate savings over the current default providers. So in our case, that would be EverSource. To be, obviously, they did beat that rate. And the expectation is that because of the flexibility and negotiations, that would continue to be the case. They do have a team of consultants that are advising on it and actively making power purchases from from the grid. Alternative providers do offer slightly lower rates. Some of them offer slightly lower rates than what's presented here. We've decided that we wanted to stick with the Coalition rather than go to private providers for a few reasons. One is that the Coalition is publicly owned. It would be answerable to the town and other members. We would have representation to the board. They have open policies which are which are under control of the members. I attended the annual meeting about a month ago and saw what the process was. And I was fairly impressed with the manner in which input can be given. Their charter requires the Coalition act in the community's interest. There's opportunity, as I mentioned earlier, to participate in other New Hampshire based energy projects hosted either by Barrington or other municipalities. And then part of the reason that there is, they, so they came out with a press release with the first rollout earlier this month, and which said what the rate plans were. There was something in there that confused me. They have always had a concept of reserves. And they published this on a per town basis and they were, they were high. I didn't understand what it meant. So I looked into that and basically the reserves would be something that if a town decided to pull out, which it could do at any time, it would receive back. The purpose of the reserves in the Coalition is to stabilize prices and to to be used for any other purposes which are necessary to the functioning of the Coalition. They have a plan to build up those reserves. They've reserved, received a large number of grants which got them going initially. The goal is over the next few years to build up the reserves, which would act as price stabilization mechanism. They have a few different levels that they plan to get to. When they start to exceed the levels that they have planned, and this is based on revenues from power production, the excesses will be returned to the member. Anyone have any questions on this slide?
Yeah. So if we were to adopt this, is there an impact at the power lines or you know, we've been very lucky as a rural community with a lot of threes to get pretty, pretty fast response when we've had storms. Any impact to that repair structure?
No, EverSource remains the distribution utility. They will be responsible for billing and line maintenance. Nothing changes there. Nothing changes in who you call if there's a problem. All that remains the same.
And obviously, EverSource has a neighbor helping neighbor fund for people living with low income, moderately low income or extremely low income. I assume with this product that our low income residents would potentially lose that option.
No, I don't believe that's the case. Now, this is one of the questions that I would want to look into. I have heard in the past mention of this and there was some assurance given, but I cannot give you specific things.
So and then the other, the other question that would be tagged along with that question is by participating in this, would it no longer allow low income, moderately low income and extremely low income residents to apply for the energy programs through Community Action Programs of Stratford, can they?
Once again, I need to look into the specifics of that. I believe the answer is that that remains unaffected and those programs continue to be available, but I I I have to look into it.
Okay.
I believe, I believe this actually just goes and paid the bill. So whatever your bill is, we get that discount.
Think you might be right, but I'd like to be certain.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just, I'm just saying, but I don't think that has anything to particularly great. I think that just it's a separate issue kind of pays the bill.
It could be correct, but there could also be if it's a a community approach, there may be something written into those grant dollars that come through federal government. Yep, I think it's just important to know.
So the lowest rate here is still significantly higher than some of the alternatives to EverSource, just for my economy of scale, but those organizations are large.
It it's hard to tell because those are private companies. We don't know what their rates are based on. We don't know how often they change them. Realize every organization that does this has to have the concept of reserves for price stabilization. Now, those companies have had a number of years to build up their reserves. The Coalition is just starting to build them up now. It may be that that's a larger portion. I really don't know. I, I, it's hard to know. You could, we could certainly get the breakdown for how the Coalition came up with this. I think that should be something that can be, is publicly available. We could not do the same for the companies that were trying to compare this.
Perfect worlds, sunshine and rainbows. If the town of Barrington has a, has a parcel of land, we have some really good grant writers and, you know, we get a one meg solar array approved. Is this going to be a part of this? And is that going to lower the rate even more?
It could be. So one of the services, one of the advantages that the Coalition has is what they provide to their members is consultation services for exactly these sorts of projects. They have a fund established for these sorts of projects. Some of the reserves can be used for these projects. So we would have a source available to us for consultation on how to go about that and the different approaches that could be taken. This is one of the big advantages that I see of going with the Coalition because we don't have that expertise. This is pretty much taken as it goes. So it's it is a, the Coalition is a nonprofit joint powers agency corporation, which the town would be required to join if it decides to participate in this program. They share their services and staff support. I've covered some of this before. They would share knowledge, collaborate regularly on projects, result with infrastructure development. They do perform public advocacy advocacy before the Regulatory Board, so they do regularly present to the PUC. And the Chair of the Coalition has been a member of the PUC. We can go on to the next. The services that are offered are part of what they refer to as the complete service bundle. And it really is just that a lot of this would go through EverSource. They go to management and billing. They do, they would operate a call center, which customers could call into for billing questions. So I said previously that you would call into EverSource. I don't know how that is handled. I believe you can call into EverSource, or at least there is a number on the bill that you could call into. Obviously, there's a difference between who you want to talk to if you're reporting a line down and if you have a question about billing. I assume that that would be handled as kind of departmental switching in some way. But that, that, the information for that will be on the bill. They do provide financial planning services if we need them. Their main goal obviously is to deal with ISO New England for load serving purposes. They do provide, they have a complete document on portfolio risk management. Dan, can you address in any detail what is in the risk management portfolio document? Okay, okay. It is, it is a fairly detailed document, all of which is public. Connor, did I make that available to you already?
No, the Joint Powers Agreement and this presentation.
So just the individual ones that we, okay, that's fine. Now, it's suffice it to say that they do have a full detailed plan on how to deal with the diversity of of risk scenarios, all of which have to be dealt with by any utility which you're dealing with. So that has been planned for and is a significant document. And then, as I said before, I had local projects and program support.
Can you give a quick example of some of the renewable energy sources that they're using for the Granite plus and three fifty and one hundred?
Well, at the moment, so.
The Granite is involved. They clearly have a beautiful solar array down there.
And I don't know that any of that would be coming specifically from Brentwood. It depends on how Brentwood is selling into the grid. So at its outset, what the Coalition is doing is they are purchasing power from ISO New England, just as everyone else is.
Okay.
What they will be doing in the future is coming up with other power purchase agreements at preferential pricing. And that may well be from some of these large commercial arrays that you've seen locally and 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 not so. They may be purchasing wind power from offshore when it's available. They may be purchasing wind power from the Midwest right now.
Interesting.
They, they basically can draw on all the resources, as any power purchaser can.
Okay.
So the initial steps. There is no risk or cost to joining the Coalition. There's no cost to the town. There's no obligation to, for the future, for participation. It does allow us to move forward and start using the support facilities of the Coalition to help us in planning how to move forward with the project. Now, I'm not trying to say that there will be no cost involved for the town. I do suggest that any of the legal documents which we're required to sign, the first of which will be the Joint Powers Agreement to join, be reviewed by Town Council. And I know that's not a zero cost plan, but I think it's something the town does on a regular basis and it shouldn't be excessive. It's a significant document, but it should be pretty manageable. All the cost of operation. All the costs of operation, the, the plan are derived from funds raised through the energy fees. There's no tax burden involved. In addition to which, if we decide at some point further down the road that we wanted to lay entry into the program, we can do that. Durham has done that. Durham was supposed to be one of the towns that was in the initial launch of the coalition, the coalition's power aggregation. They decided actually pretty close to the last minute. It was within a month of when things were going to be switched on, that they wanted to set step back and see how the process went. I actually talked to some people from Durham because I was concerned about why they had pulled out. And I was reassured that there was nothing, there was nothing special in nature about it. It was just that they, for an abundance of caution, they wanted to hold back and, and wait until, they didn't want to be one of the leading communities.
Like Dover did that this week too.
Did they? Okay, I did not, was not aware of that. Do you know when they were supposed to roll out?
Soon, it was in a month.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I thought they were a first wave community also. I know that Durham and Dover both made the decision, hey, we'll wait and see how it goes.
Okay, yeah, there had originally been thirteen communities and I know that ten were in role.
And Nashua pulled back as well?
No, Nashua.
Nashua proceeded. Have we gotten any feedback from the city of Nashua?
I can't get feedback because we aren't officially members.
Okay.
So, and I, I, and unfortunately, if you go to their website, which is cpcnh.org, they do have a media section. But none of this is in there. The, interestingly, when I went to the annual meeting, which was days before the initial rollout, Eversource had just thrown that wrench into the works that I mentioned where they, they wanted to get they needed some, they wanted some numbers. It's not, it is actually very specifically not required under the regulatory framework of that New Hampshire put in place. But they wanted some dumb, dunce numbers so that they could distinguish individual municipalities rather than dealing with the community power coalition as a whole. They came out with that four days before this was supposed to go into service.
Simplest thing.
And we spent a lot of time talking about that.
I have another question.
Sure.
So we joined this coalition and you know, Eversource catches wind a bit and
Oh, it's not catches wind. They have to be kept abreast of things very early in the process because we need to get information for electronic data exchange from them.
Right. So once, once they see, you know, we're, we're acting on it, whatnot, and we go through this and you know, have some small legal fees to review and just, you know, join in, but then it's not our thing. You know, is that going to screw up any agreements that the town has with Eversource right now? Or they're going to increase rates for like, hey, you know, it didn't really work out, you know?
Do that. They're, they're controlled by the PUC. So no, it would simply be that there wouldn't be a switchover.
Okay.
We have a three-year contract with an external supplier that we cannot as a municipality back out of for how many more years?
Power purchase agreement. This is enough, this, so this is one of the features which the community power coalition would not have. There was no penalty to withdraw.
So that three-year contract expired. That was a very favorable
It was, yeah.
My dad, it was seven cents.
No, it was at twenty, yeah.
And we had that all the way up until, what was it, February of last year when rates were twenty cents?
Yep.
So we went a period of six months on the default rate and the select board authorized entering. I think it was just a twelve-month or maybe even eleven-month contract, short, short term. And that expires, gosh, I want to say January, February. Don't put me on that, I'll get back to you on the specifics. But yeah, this would be our supply. And so to your point, Jim, for the last half dozen years, the town has bought power from other than Eversource.
But keep in mind, that is the municipality, not the residents.
And as I understand it, based on a motion tonight, joining the coalition, getting data together is steps one and two. But the actual residents of the town of Barrington, which is the legislative body, would have to vote on this. Okay, I just, I think that it's, in an SB two community, always best that we are looking towards the residents, but it also will require us to provide them with a large amount of
Then even after the residents vote on it, individual residents have the option of opting out. They don't have to actually participate in it. So it's completely down to choice.
One thing too, that part of what you said initially is if you have separate agreements other than Eversource, those
Remind.
Those supersede, so the agreement we have with whoever at this point would continue until, till we decided as a group, I suppose. Once the town agrees that we can do this, then the select board would then decide if we wanted to go with
Then one other question for community residents that may experience medical needs far beyond what a typical person experiences. Give you an example, I have a brother who's eight years out from a heart transplant. He at one point had what's called a heart pump. It was imperative that his batteries for the heart pump be charged or he expired. So when we have residents with delicate medical conditions, utilizing a program like this will affect those residents in what way?
It won't because Eversource is still the distribution.
So they would still report out to Eversource, provide the medical documentation that they need immediate response when there's an outage.
Yeah, yeah, I would have said, I, I, I mean, I don't know specifically, but Eversource is responsible for online maintenance issues and all distribution issues. The only thing this changes is where the power comes from.
Okay. I would just want to check on that medical fragility reporting so that we can be certain that our vulnerable residents are having their issues addressed.
I may need to come back to you on that.
Yeah, it required a doctor's note be sent to Eversource for the amount of time that it was residing in my household. And if he's watching this meeting, I'm sorry, I shared your medical information, brother. He's not watching.
Probably in violation of It's all
Perfect.
And there is a concern that there may not be a sufficient electric supply to the nation. And I don't know that that would change the agreement, we're going to change that.
We, we cannot affect that.
So I, I have a question. You know, we can't get any information or any intel until we, we sign up and we put our foot in the door. Is there any mentions of why that is?
No, no. It, it, that, it's not that, it's that they're not, they're not publishing it and their consultants, as you can imagine, they just had the first ten towns switch on or are in the process of having that being done now over the first month. They are incredibly busy and one of the members of the energy, so their consultant in this, who, who is responsible for a lot of the interactions, his name is Henry Herndon. And he happens to be a personal friend of one of the members of the energy committee. Jack has a much easier time of getting Henry on the phone than I do. And as a result, that is an alternate source for me to go to when I really need some information. I'm trying to leave them alone for the most part. I would like to know how the rollout, you know, what the nitty gritty details were of how things worked out with these dunce numbers and were they able to turn the other towns on? But it's not, even if it didn't work out, this is a delay of a couple of months to get new dunce numbers for each municipality.
Yeah, it's just something that other people will ask, like, well, why, why isn't it a big secret if it's so good? You know what I mean? So.
I don't think there are any secrets. I mean, what there is is a huge body of, of documentation to go through. So these are the steps involved in the program approval. And that, that is the municipality's approval. So this isn't, this doesn't have a whole lot to do with the coalition. This is what has to be done in town. I realize there's some detail there and it's not the largest text. But the steps basically are that the town would need to join the coalition by adopting the joint powers agreement. Along with that, they would have to appoint a representative to the board. After that, they would form an aggregation committee or assign it to an existing committee. We haven't decided completely what our viewpoint on that is. It's largely affected by how easily we'll be able to draft additional members into the process. And so far, that has been difficult. We may need to take that on ourselves. And that would be the plan that would be formed for carrying out the local process. After that, we need to obtain data from Eversource on the customer base, draft an aggregation plan using a template provided by the coalition, which is actually quite detailed. There will be some customization involved. This would have to go by town council, I'm assuming. After that's completed and we have an aggregation plan, not in place, but established, something that can be read, distributed and made available to the board, to the residents. We would hold public hearings for community feedback on that plan. The plan would be updated according to the feedback that we received in that meeting. And then approval would actually take place by a vote at town meeting. Once the plan is approved, assuming that the town does approve it, then we get into the steps that are required for program launch. So the PUC has certain requirements in that. There is a, a, a cost sharing agreement that, that has to be signed by the town with the coalition. There is no upfront cost to that. It's basically an agreement as to how the rate payer fines are dispersed, paying for power, paying for the other services. The select board has to approve the policies and rates. Everything gets run by the select board. There has to be public outreach. Prior to the switchover taking place, there is a notification requirement put in place by the PUC. We have to notify thirty days in advance of the launch and hold a public meeting fifteen days before the launch. Assuming that all goes smoothly, a launch takes place. That's basically
Couple of questions, Paul. So on Eversource's site, they indicate that in six years and seven months, they'll be carbon neutral for all of their energy supply. Do you feel that that is not a possibility? Is, I guess I'm trying to be sure, is if our goal is sustainability and using renewable energy sources, it seems to me that we would, or if our goal is to reduce costs, or maybe it's both. But it would seem to me that we need to investigate both areas to be sure that we might be introducing a product to our residents that may not move as fast based on the chart that was provided at the fifty percent, thirty-three percent or a hundred percent renewable. They may not be moving as fast here as Eversource might be in the carbon neutral response. What's your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are that basically what they seem to be offering now at the option of the customer.
Okay.
Something that Eversource looks, claims that they will offer in six years.
Okay.
Now, it is a fact that the cheapest sources of energy at this point are wind and solar. So it does make sense that the utilities will be moving in the direction of neutrality. There's also a number of ways that you can measure neutrality. Some are more meaningful than others. Those measurements will be changing over the next few years as larger portions of energy production switch over to renewable resources.
Okay.
The other thing is that they're a hundred percent Bill, Granite One Hundred program then negotiates with Eversource. Eversource may in fact be the predict
No.
The energy supplier.
Eversource.
Eversource is not an energy provider. We would buy from the same sources that Eversource is buying.
Understood. Okay.
And they may negotiate lower price than Eversource. Eversource can assist them
Right.
Making a profit.
I mean, one of the things to understand is that the amount of leverage that the coalition has out of the gate is very significant and is growing. They are well on that to become the largest energies provider in the state.
Okay. And then have we investigated and are we certain that by participating in this type of program, that we are not as a municipality potentially giving up other federal grants that are coming down the pike for renewable energy?
I don't know of anything in the IRA that would be limited on this basis. There's nothing about the community power aggregation or any kind of power aggregation that's going to affect that. All of the funding still applies. But I, I'd be lying if I told you that I had exhaustively investigated that. It's, it's possible, I don't think so. That would be a worthwhile question.
I think it's an important question to ask, given what we're being presented with. I just think of things like, I remember listening to a coal supplier. They put scrubbers on their plants. And when they talked about changing emissions back, that particular coal supplier in a different part of the nation said, it would never be cost effective for us to take the scrubbers off. So you can, you know, change emissions all you want. We're not changing what we're doing right now. Not just for the impact on the environment, but for the impact on them monetarily. So I think sometimes digging deep into those details becomes important. But I can guess that our residents would like to save money.
Uh, this was just a couple of points. You can go back to the one before.
I'm sorry, over again.
So these are just a couple of points that I wanted to drive home. There is no upfront expense that the town would be exposed to. And all of the costs are recovered after the launch through net revenues obtained from the ratepayers.
Is there a reason we would have to vote on this tonight? Is there a timeline?
I'll go, the last slide is what I'm asking.
Okay.
So the main points that, that I have here are, as we discussed, there's a larger user base that should give more flexibility and more leverage in negotiations for power purchases. And therefore, it should result in lower rates. Eversource, in terms of their line maintenance and billing, remains as it is. This should increase access to, to especially New Hampshire-based alternative energy sources. The coalition provides all of the services that we need and consultation services so that we know how to use them. And this is a growing fast. So these are our asks. We are asking that the select board review and adopt the joint powers agreement, which allows us to join the coalition. You at that point will also need to appoint a director. I'm not sure about the alternate. At the moment, because we are unable to find anyone else to take this on, I am proposing that I would be that director for the initial phases of the project. Any other questions? Any other questions?
And would you accept being an alchemist?
Yes, I would.
You can tell me why to meet them.
So.
We have it on TV, though.
We need vote.
Before.
It would be a good idea to have that.
Before entertaining a motion tonight, so a couple of things I would like to explore, because first of all, I love this. I understand that, you know, this is doing due diligence. This is not being against this idea. I would like to know, does it exclude us from any federal dollars that might be coming our way? Would like to get an estimate from our legal department to see what it would cost to review all the documentation. Is that going to be fifty thousand, twenty thousand, a hundred thousand? I think that's important to know out of the gate. And I would love answers to how it could impact our low-income community members and those with vulnerable medical situations.
I have those questions.
So that'd be awesome. So those are my questions.
Connor, do you know, does our legal counsel, do they represent any of those other towns that already joined?
They do.
So they've reviewed the joint powers contract already?
Yes.
Yeah.
I love that. Yeah. Can't tell us twice for looking at the same thing over again, but give us an answer. I like that.
Probably treat these two just the same like any other appointment, discussion, and then a vote.
Oh, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yep. So when we review appointees and then. Okay. So those questions would be great to have answered. Any other?
So does he need another form to allocate form?
That's definitely a second one. I would suspect not. You could treat it as a subcommittee appointment within the Energy Committee, especially where the Energy Committee was recently formed, but it's certainly up to the select board.
So if our members, should we, since we have.
The application. I would suggest this be the application.
Yeah. He as well.
We have both on TV.
And they filled out those forms previously.
Thank you for all the hard work on this.
So we.
Be kidding.
I was gonna say, it's a lot.
So we would put this on the agenda for our next meeting. And if you could provide any of those answers, I guess, in the intro.
Yeah, I'll also give you a complete list of documents that you might, even though the only document that's immediately questioned is the joint powers agreement, you may want to get an estimate on the rest of those.
The one they showed with the colors, which don't fill on our. I think when I looked at this once ago, they actually have different participation, different levels of participation. Those colored answers, these needs, I can't look it up.
I wonder if there were numbers.
On the thing, the stars for the state? Oh, I didn't know.
I think they have different percentage or different kinds of participation in the coalitions. As I was talking, it was several months ago that I looked at.
Okay.
Once we're in there, so we got the numbers from Eversource as far as our residents, that will actually give us a really concrete number as far as what our residents pay per year for electricity and what they would save actually with the coalition too. So sometimes I've done that and there's really large numbers they're saving, so.
The numbers, like I said, when we, Rob and I looked at the reserve numbers for the first three months that were projected, and the numbers were huge, and the amount of money that's spent on energy is really staggering.
Let's peace.
Yeah. Chairperson, are we supposed to hold a public comment section because this is public hearing or no?
It's public hearing and invited guests. It's supposed to be invited guests.
Excellent.
Category. The Bria Chair and I consolidated those so we could get our invited guests at the beginning of the agenda. So we can revisit that if it's a weirdness.
No, I think that's great.
Okay.
I would hate for them to sit till the end of the meeting and then get to speak.
Sometimes that happens, but.
So thank you, Paul. We'll plan to see you at the next meeting.
Okay.
We have all the information.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to give a quick shout out to the, the Energy Committee has been maintaining a website, the Energy Committee website. And Leah Harrington is the member who's really taken it on in earnest. We sat down, she was trained up on the website, and she manages that. She makes posts. The committee talks about messaging to get out there, and so it's a good resource. They intend to continue updating that. But resources for residents, not just about community power, but about energy savings, rebate opportunities, and things like that. So the committee's doing a lot of great work.
Awesome. Can we push a link out on?
Absolutely.
On the town Facebook page? That'd be awesome.
Or maybe hit search, that's on.
That's out of bounds.
It's out. Got our tax bills. Yeah, we got our tax.
Everybody's Christmas in.
Oh, look at you.
So any other questions or comments before we move on?
Paying my salary here.
All right, consent agenda. Let's vote on consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second, okay, Rob, second.
Did we add number I for the mobile phones? We added that? Number I, letter I, did we add that?
And we removed item app for the small road.
Gotcha.
Last six private.
Thank you. Okay. So roll call, Harthak.
Gibson, I.
Sure.
Just item D, the Advisory Budget Committee. These are up for our first review.
Advisory Budget Committee. So we have an application from Scott Shepherd, who was looking to renew. He has previously sort of as a full-time member of the Advisory Budget Commission, and he's looking for a full-time term expiring in two thousand twenty-six.
He's brilliant.
Yeah.
That's my response. He's brilliant.
Been on the ABC for a long time. All three of these people are really important participants. They look carefully and they consider it thoroughly. They discuss reasonably, so.
So for the record, Bill Irving is as famously served as an alternate to the ABC with his term having expired. He's requesting a full term expiring in two thousand twenty-six. And then Peter Royce previously has served as a budget committee as well as most other committees in town. And he is stepping back to an alternate role to allow Bill Irving to be a full voting member to the alternate appointment with the term expiring in two thousand twenty-six.
Excellent.
All three of them.
Yeah, quality. Yeah.
They're quality people.
Quality humans.
So they'll be on our agenda to vote at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Stanford for you.
Yes, thank you. So I've listed the many work anniversaries in the report again and read through them at the last meeting. So I'll read them again, but certainly appreciate the tenure of those staff members. Really quick, under the training opportunities, so Primex provides our insurance, liability, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance for the town. They've put on a great conference every year. They call it their Risk Summit. Typically, it's up north. This year was in Portsmouth, and they had a lot of great programs, and they brought in a lot of professionals, both working professionals that work in municipalities across the state, but also a lot from the outside. They focus a lot on leadership. Again, their efforts are risk prevention, mitigation, avoidance. So they do a lot of leader training. They also do a lot of risk management for incident response, things like that. They had a really awesome program, which I didn't participate in, but this year to try to attract more first responders and leaders and first responders. They had an experience at the six-hour facility in incident response. It was a whole half a day the day before. But anyways, it's a great conference that they put on. I listed some of the sessions that I participated in. I'm happy to answer any questions, but upcoming, we have the June first Local Officials Workshop. The June eighth, there's a municipal trustees training workshop, and then June thirteenth, there's a Right to Know Law and Public Meetings Workshop. And all three of those are put on by the Nashville Municipal Association. Moving on, formal strategic planning, just another plug here. We'll be having our strategic planning session on June twenty-seventh. I'm working actively on a document which provides the background and notes and progress, if you will, for those goal areas that the select board has identified. And this will kind of be a primer to facilitate the discussion, so we're not spending a lot of time at the session talking about, well, didn't we do such and such a couple of years ago? So we can kind of get a good update of where we are in these areas and focus on the future and for each of those areas. And so again, if there's a goal area that you would like to discuss with the strategic planning section that isn't on the list, let me know so we can prepare documentation and really focus our energy on that session looking forward. Again, that's June twenty-seventh. We'll meet at six for dinner, and then we'll start the session at six thirty.
Thank you. It'd be helpful to have a background, which.
Definitely. I have even learned quite a bit going through, digging through the history of things that happened before my time. And so it's, yeah, it's been a productive exercise so far. I look forward to getting that too. The demographic study, just to touch on this again, I met with the superintendent last week. And so the school has formed a committee to kind of sift through this demographic study that they commissioned as a town-funded half of. And so what she asked to do is let that committee work through the data a little bit more. And then she offered later this summer to come back and make a presentation to the select board on their findings and key pieces of information from that data. Please.
I suggest that the stuff that you brought up and put on the website is probably as useful and practically more useful. The S thirty.
And I maybe suggest if they would like help, that they potentially reach out to the Carcy School. I know that there's some pretty incredible students that drill down a variety of data, and it might not only be a great intern project for someone throughout the summer who's trying to fulfill that, but they may find it extremely helpful. That's entirely up to the school board, though.
Again, I'm sorry, can you elaborate? What did you say might be beneficial to provide?
The things that Tracy put on our.
The regional planning. Regional planning gave us the Barrington snapshot data.
Okay.
Yeah.
Community profile.
Yeah, the community profile snapshot.
That's good.
It's interesting.
Okay, so that's demographic study, and that's all I have other than the rest of the event.
Quick question. We added the, my apologies. We added the mobile. Do we have to indicate what fund that is coming from? We didn't, I know we put it on the consent agenda. I'm wondering if for the public we.
Yes, it was in the materials, but it was the.
Capital improvement, correct?
Emergency communication.
Reserve. Thank you. Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, and it will be reflected in this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a little business.
Tiffany.
Um, just, sorry about that. Okay. I'm just looking for signatures for the oath of office that were just spread as well as the regular leases for the plastics and materials.
Okay.
Now we move on to a couple of business. So we have a town warrant article implementation discussion. And is there anything we need to talk about in terms of the election results? From your perspective?
Yeah, I reported on that the first meeting. I mean, I think we had a good turnout. We learned a lot. The kids' voting seemed productive, so those were all, you know, key takeaways. We talked also at that meeting about the results for funding from the tax rate versus unassigned fund balance. This is, this agenda item focuses on those things, those steps staff have to take after warrant articles pass or fail and where we take items. So some are pretty self-explanatory, but others will require some discussion by the board. And so we talked about those zoning ordinance updates. So the updated ordinance and that is on the website for those zoning articles that passed. There was one zoning article that didn't pass. That was Article seven, seven relative to temporary signs. We'll talk more about signs in a minute. The operating budget passed, Article nine, which was the tip district that failed. I think we will probably focus our, some conversation on that at our strategic planning session. I don't know that we need to dig into that a lot more before then, it not being time sensitive.
Do we need to, as a collective group, agree that we would like to continue discussion on that? In a strategic manner? Yeah, so I think we'd all like to explore that further, yes?
And that's on the list.
Okay.
Yep. So we will have that conversation wherever it may go.
Okay.
So the Article twenty-two was also added to the operating budget. That was an appropriation that increased the operating budget for the police contract, capital reserve contributions, and the additional non-lapsing money was approved. And Article twenty failed. That was the energy capital reserve. And so previously, at one of the recent select board meetings, the select board authorized spending the fifteen hundred dollars, which is the match for the grant to perform that energy audit. That process is underway right now. And much, many thanks to the Energy Committee for helping to facilitate that grant program. So moving on, the veteran credits passed by a large margin. The assessing department has been processing those.
Excuse me, Connor, what's the total amount with those changes that you're offering as a town?
Yeah, they're both maximized. So it's a state maximum for the all-veteran credit is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And importantly, one change that went into effect this year with the all-veteran credit is the state legislature last year redefined eligibility for the all-veteran credit. They essentially expanded it more. Service members are eligible for the all-veterans credit than were previously. We won't know until this year how many more that picks up in Barrington. But we promoted that information with the passage of it. And then the service connected total disability credit is the maximum, which is four thousand dollars.
Okay. And how many people were currently participating in that? Do you recall?
The service connected total disability is about fifty, and the all-veterans credit was about seven hundred. There's the document you would like to see to have the specifics is the exemption and credit analysis. We do that annually in October.
Okay.
So I can send you a copy of the one from two thousand twenty-two, and we'll do it again this October. We'll have updated numbers.
Okay. And are veterans with service, total service disability can take advantage of both the four thousand and the seven hundred and fifty?
Up to the maximum of their tax liabilities. So those are tax credits. They're not refundable, right?
Excellent.
Income tax.
Yep, thank you.
One of the things about veterans is you have to apply, so we won't know how many people actually apply for them.
So if our veterans are watching, please apply.
The tax assessment doesn't go out and find those people.
Understood.
Yeah, one cool thing that we do that a lot of communities don't do, Joyce mentioned earlier, the tax bill inserts. So the deadline to apply for exemptions and credits, pretty sure is March fifteenth. It's in March. It's before the tax year starts, which is April first. And so we focus our outreach efforts to residents with the second half tax bill insert. So we have a whole section that itemizes all the exemptions and credits. And credit to our tax collector, that's where the tax bill insert idea came from. We, the taxes had gone up, and she said, I feel for the residents that we have that their taxes are going up. I want to make sure they know about what's available to them for options. She said, our tax bill printers will put in an insert for us, and it's really pretty cheap. It's a couple hundred bucks to hit every mailbox. We said, well, how can we snowball this idea? What else can we pack in there? How can we information overload residents? But anyways, so we do advertise to residents in their tax bills, the exemptions and credits are available to.
Great transparency.
Okay, moving on, the technology committee has met and will continue to work on what that bringing fiber to the home means for Barrington. There are still regulatory hurdles. We don't have the ability to advance that ball much further, even with new legislation that's happened this session, but we'll continue to work on it. And then Article twenty-seven was the noise ordinance, which is in effect, and the police department has been trained on. So the last four articles were petitioned articles, which were amended to deliberative session. And so this is where I think any decision that the select board or any consideration that the select board has in how they're implemented or what steps that we take, but I tried to provide pertinent information. So the first is Article twenty-eight. So this is the topic of a code of ethics. And so the article, the amended article, we ran to see if the town will vote to encourage the select board to evaluate. to evaluate the need for a code of ethics in addition to the mandatories of office for all town officers who are not subject to the town personnel policy. And so what I provided you for some information, there's a statute that allows the creation of a code of ethics. This would be adopted by voters. And that's our say thirty one on thirty nine dash A. And I provided a couple of articles. The first is from the Hecam Municipal Association that's considering an ethics ordinance stick to simple values and principles. Probably the most recent and publicized example of establishment of a code of ethics is our neighbors to the north, the city of Rochester. You'll remember they had a city councillor who was ousted with sexual harassment claims and all the rest. And so in response to that, the city council focused a great deal of time and effort to create a code of ethics and try to apply. Now again, they get to decide at their level because they're the city council, they're the legislative body. Anything that the town did would have to be approved by the launch.
So I I've read their entire code of ethics. Above and beyond what we already agreed to in our oath, I found one area or one line that I felt had any impact above and beyond our oath of office. And I have watched that city and some of the consideration that was applied at various times. I feel as a governing body, if any one of the five of us were to violate our oath of office, we very comfortably would hold each other accountable and hold a non-public and vote to potentially remove that person. I don't feel that there needs to be a code of ethics in order for, I feel we're already empowered to do what would need to happen.
A good example of just that, the town Austin, they had their three member select board. They had a member elected for the first time. Or elected to to new term. He hadn't been previously been serving in March. And the two select board members received seven sworn affidavits from staff members citing harassment and potentially illegal activity. And the select board, the two other select board members presented that to the third member, asked for his resignation. And when he didn't resign, they subsequently voted to petition the court to have him removed. I think he actually ended up resigning. But that's an example of how that violation of the the oath of office plays out practically just this year.
Yeah.
So the question to the select board, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I did spend on the research later, I'm sorry, is our personnel policy, you know, the dot page on interest and ethics. You know, I guess we could incorporate some of that, but it's, they have N's worth of examples and then others. So I'm not sure it's real, really terribly productive. If you look at this, it's the kind of thing that we normal, you know, it's based, most of that part of the ethics is about being part of a company that sells and deals financially, it's mostly financial.
I think we're accusing yourself from anything. There's a value to you and the discussion is important. But I I think as far as what the oath of, I I have I I respect that that was, this was brought forward as a petition warrant article. I respect that the voters that were in the what date is that? The the town deliberative session felt comfortable allowing this board to review everything. Loved the article that was in the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which again states that adding another layer to this muddies the water and potentially takes the power that we would have as described in the situation from a New Hampshire SB two community. I assume Ross is an SB two community. Okay, so I, so I guess in my mind as a collaborative group, I, it says encourage us to evaluate the need for it. And I just don't feel there's a need for it.
Yeah, I think I think the oath covers everything.
I keep mine on my refrigerator. I kept a copy on my refrigerator.
Say we don't need a code of ethics as a public statement. That feels a little uncomfortable. But in looking at some of the legal readings for this, how the code of ethics, at least in this state, doesn't actually protect any of us anymore. Then the the oath of office, which is, you know, legally recognized by the state of New Hampshire. So I guess I just want that message out there is that the residents have quite a bit of protection under the oath of office.
I think we should read the oath of office so that our residents are aware of it. Is that something that we could do?
Absolutely.
So it would be, I, whomever, do solemnly swear that I bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire and will support the constitutions thereof. So help me God. I, and you state your name, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I'll faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me and various capacity according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help me God. I took a copy of my oath and keep it on my refrigerator because I think that it's important. I think that it's what we have signed up to volunteer for and volunteer elect positions and appointed roles. And that's why I feel there isn't a need for anything further.
The listening session that you led last year where we put forward our values and our mission and our goals, it might be good. I think we we visit that and and
Vision and values.
Yeah, that's all of the values and vision tied with our oath.
Yeah.
I think. And you know, as a new board.
Yeah.
Well, we were all part of that session.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe, you know.
Just reviewing those.
Yeah, reviewing those quickly at our
That's the way to start the next strategic plan session and start, you know, fair, look at what we did last year.
Mission, vision, values. Okay.
I think the things residents might be looking for in a code of ethics in terms of conflict of interest, you know, no harassment, that kind of thing, actually is all defined in the constitution.
And certainly ninety one A under right to know holds us to very high standards in how we communicate publicly.
We bid one point, at one point, board quite conceivably, and three veterans. So if we voted on the veterans thing, we all recused ourselves to not have a form.
Well, and it wouldn't, I mean, quite frankly, when we have voted in the past on veterans issues, I have made very clear that I am a household, although I am not a veteran, I am a household that would have would be impacted by that change from six hundred and fifty to seven. And I, yeah. Absolutely appropriate, sure.
I think we all said that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's excellent. So
Any more discussion? If I think we should take a vote then. And I guess we need an actual
So I would make a motion that we have reviewed as we were encouraged to as a select board. The need for a code of ethics, find that that is, it does not need to be implemented in addition to our mandatory oath of office and that we are very comfortable operating with that oath of office. That would be my motion.
We'll call.
Our cough, I.
Gibson, I.
Mine.
That motion passes. Let's go on to our next petition warrant article, which is Article twenty nine, the duty to inform to see if the town will vote to encourage employees and officers, meaning us, who while acting in their official capacity, receive firsthand actionable information about possible gun violence against children to report to law enforcement on such information. And we had some anonymous agents refer to.
Yeah, that's part of our office.
Agreed.
We don't think that was needed at all. And I think if anybody felt that anybody was in danger, whether it was a firearm or sword or a knife, we were, we can patch the room. That was by the police department. D S A P.
Right. And and for me, it was also very narrow. I mean, there's many issues of violence against children that are not included in this petition.
So I I would make a motion at this time that we have that acting I I guess that we have reviewed the suggestion that the town would encourage this and feel that it's part of the oath of office for all.
Members and officers.
Officers of the town that any potential violence would be part of our oath of office to form and react to. So I would, I, my motion would be to not take action on this.
Dan, were you trying to raise your
I was gonna say, I'm not sure we need to have a question whether we actually need to vote on this. Not having a discussion, as we were instructed to do by the legislative body. We were discussing it. We had the discussion. We don't know that we actually need a motion.
We may not, but it's also pretty clear for the all over. We'll call.
I, our top five. Gibson.
Let's move on to the next one, Article thirty, court proceeding webpage to see if the town will vote to encourage the select board to make court proceedings excluding personnel issues involving the town available to residents on the town website. It will already do that. So in some ways, this is very redundant.
So I would make a motion that we as a select board have reviewed this and that we feel as an operational perspective, this is already occurring, therefore there's no need for a motion on this. Article five.
Gibson, I.
Article thirty one, temporary signs to see if the town will vote to recommend that planning board review the provisions of the zoning ordinance regarding temporary signs and to propose any recommended changes at the next time. Planning board is planning to do this.
We we don't need a motion to direct planning board to do this.
Yeah, in the notes, the the select or the planning board is working on this. Like I said, Article seven failed. That was kind of like a late in the game attempt by the planning board to make some progress on on the sign ordinance. But they'll be working on that. But I also think, I think relative to signs, the select board may or may not want to take an active role or take some steps. I know because you forwarded them to me that all of you have been reached out to residents about signs, what the rules are, how the rules are different. We prepared, you know, a summary of the sign rules and laws and how they differ on state highways and town roads. But there are some things that I think that if it was a priority for the select board that we could consider moving forward. So we're already working on providing more clear information to residents, guides about what is or isn't allowed. A perfect example, the town's existing sign ordinance says that no signs ever are allowed in the town's right of way. And so every every, you know, I offer metal roofing, I offer gutter clearing, my dogs lost. Every sign that you see is in the town's right of way is already not allowed. Now, as you know, we enforce our zoning ordinance by complaint. And so the zoning administrator doesn't drive around town looking for violations to write a notice it's about. But if it's a complaint, then we do complain, the zoning administrator identifies that the complaint is actually a violation. But the, but providing some information about that to make sure residents understand what is or isn't allowed. The other thing is in state highways, the state allows political signs in the right of way. And there's a discrepancy in the state statute about, it's very clear when the signs have to come down, but it's not very clear when the signs have to go up. But what is very clear is that signs need landowner permission. And so, you know, when signs go up in the state highway, even at the intersection of town roads, you know, nine and one twenty five, up one twenty five and Green Hill, down at the intersection of Beauty Hill. So those political signs that you often see around these intersections are only allowed if there's permission given by the bloody property owner. And so the right of way is over private property and the private property needs to get permission. And so again, educating residents about that, if it was a priority of the select board, is something that we could try to do. And relative to the state highways, I learned recently in a conversation with DOT. You know, the the earth median at the intersection nine, one twenty five, it's on one twenty five, but there's two strips of grass, north and south. And anytime there's signs there, they always get blown into the road and, you know, the metal posts are there just waiting for someone to run into those problems. The district engineer, I was talking to him and I said, you know, here, there are things that we could do to to identify some areas that maybe signs just shouldn't be. So, oh, signs never supposed to be there. I said, oh, well, drive through, drive through Barrington at any time and you'll see signs in that median. He said, oh, no, the, you know, out of conquer, the traffic division issued an issue, a memorandum that said that no signs will ever be placed in medians of a state highway. And I said, okay, well, you know, what do we have to do to get that enforced? If we were to communicate to residents that, hey, it's okay to put signs, here is where it isn't okay to put signs. And so basically what he said to me is if the town wants to see the state enforce its sign laws, then the select board should say that to the state, say that to DOT and will respond to local select boards. That's, you know, how the the powers that be are are encouraged or not encouraged to do.
They just aren't only to complain to this.
Well, not necessarily, but I think the point that he was making is it's easier for them to channel resources to correcting a problem if they're hearing about it from the select board in a community versus a couple of residents or things like that. So if the select board as a body identifies something as a problem and wants to see something done about it, that moves the needle more is the takeaway that I had from the conversation. And so, yeah, I don't know what all the the select or select board wants to do about signs other than waiting for the planning board to maybe propose changes to the existing ordinance. But the point bringing this up is there are items in the existing sign ordinance which, you know, are aren't being followed time wide. Maybe if they were followed, residents wouldn't be so uneasy or if they were enforced. But also with state partners, I think if it was a priority for the select board, we could work on that. But it's up to you all to decide.
So I would make a motion that we allow the planning board to continue to function as an independent body of the land use and allow them to review in in their own independent state, as an independent body, any sign zoning ordinance that they'd like to bring forward.
Capella.
It it so I'm concerned about the DOT and the intersection of Route nine and one twenty five as a small rural town. Like the library perennial plant sale sign is up there and I don't, by the way, when is that? June what? Yeah, so.
No, I was just, I was just talking about the median.
Oh, very good. So I would, I would definitely recommend as a select board that the median strips for two reasons. I I don't really care about signs at all in that median. What I care about is somebody's got to cross a busy highway and they are distracting as you are approaching the lights. So I would agree that we should probably ask DOT to those little tiny strips.
It's only like a foot and a half, isn't it?
Yeah.
Why can't they just put pavement in?
They don't want to. So I mean, I I would feel comfortable that the select board ask the DOT to, you know, respond to those grassy medians in the middle of the highway.
Yeah. I think it's just more of a safety concern if, you know, the ambulance has to cross over and
Oh, I didn't even think of that.
Somebody gets a flat tire.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that.
Yeah, and how many people in a small home, they put up their signs and then we put them up because they always fall over and
Yeah, so I would say I would make a motion that the select board send a letter and encourage DOT to remove the median signs.
A second.
Break my life.
Gibson.
And so it really be up to
The O T.
To put that.
Yeah, and like I said, I think education, we can let residents know what rules exist now. So that they can be encouraged to follow them, but they can also be, if they have concerns, they can so that they can be encouraged to follow them, but they can also be, uh, if they have concerns, they can know where the lines are and they can know how to make a complaint if they want to. So we don't have to do additional work, but uh respond to complaints as they come in as we do now.
Moving on, um, our next discussion is around the fiscal year um budget. Do you have some new information from when we about this previously?
Yeah, so great question, uh, a great um point about the new information. Um, the the big thing about the the two things, right? So moving our town meeting from March to May, which was the goal was to give it away from uh winter season, get it closer to when we start spending the budget. If we also move the fiscal year from January to December to July to June. And so the, right now, the town meeting and the school meeting, both SB two organizations, which means we have a delivery session and a voting session. That voting session for the town and school both happens in March. The biggest thing that I learned in taking this a step further and evaluating is there's no SB two school organizations that have their school meeting in May. And part of the reason as I learned from the superintendent is that the Department of Education has an April fifteenth requirement that contracts be issued for the upcoming year. And so they rely on the passage of the budget to to finalize those contracts or make difficult decisions if they have to. And so when it really comes down to it, the option of having the school meeting in May is seems like an impossibility. And so the only way for the town to have a town meeting in May be to have essentially an extra election, uh, which in my mind moves the threshold for this stupid idea really high because an extra election is is a pain, as we know. And so, um, the closest example, uh, was the town in Newport over in Shadow Lake, Sunapee, North Sunapee. And they do just that. They have a town meeting in May and they have a school meeting in March. And it sounds like terrible, dude. Um, and so.
Like your honesty.
Yeah.
I really appreciate your honesty.
No comment, Jerry.
I I don't, um, so I don't think it's a good idea to do our town meeting because it would mean having an extra election every single year. Uh, the fiscal year change, there are still ten communities in the state that have a July to June fiscal year, but still have their town meeting in March. And this is what the school does, right? They start spending their budget in July, uh, and it's passed in March. So they still pass it ahead of time and then start spending it. And so I think there are still reasonably good ideas to change the fiscal year. But without also changing the town meeting, I don't think, um, I don't think you have enough benefit for how much of a pain it is to make that change. Um, and so I would also recommend that we that we stop evaluation of that idea also. Um, and just maintain, we we know more now, I know more than I did when we evaluated this, but I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it's worth pursuing, Virgil.
We discussed this earlier, but why would it, why would it make a big difference if we had our March meeting and then started spending money in June?
So the the challenge of transitioning the fiscal year is approving the eighteen month budget.
Right.
Um, and so the the additional challenge of having uh, the July to June fiscal year or approving a budget in March is what the school experiences right now, which is in order to prepare for a March budget to be approved by voters, it needs to be finalized by January for the public hearing that's required. Which means the the governing board, the select board in that case, needs to be reviewing it and finalizing it in October, November, December, which means staff and department heads need to start developing it in August and September. And so they start spending their budget in July first and then they start developing next year's budget in August. And so they don't have the benefit of much budget utilization to base their budget development on. And so it makes more sense if you can move that budget development to January, February, have your meeting in May and then start spending it in July. Uh, but the uh approving an eighteen month budget and still having the meeting in March, uh, in my opinion, it didn't seem like there's enough justification to.
Yeah. I appreciate your recommendation and would like to stick with our March vote if the rest of the board feels comfortable.
Yeah, based on the new. Uh, we move on to new business. Um, we have an EMS week proclamation uh coming up and we will need to make a motion um to support that proclamation.
I would like to make a motion to adopt twenty twenty three EMS week proclamation.
In a second, try me.
Hi. Gibson.
We also have a proposal to approve a public works week proclamation.
Oh, I would like to make a motion to adopt twenty twenty three public work works week proclamation.
And a big thank you to all of our fine working employees of the town of Barrington.
So the next item is the class six private road application. And this is a first one, well, we did first one.
It is small room.
Small room.
That one is six block four.
And and there was some confusion about this because um on the the map that was
On the plans. Yeah.
It says a bedroom. And what was um proposed in the application was a garage.
And storage above. So um, a couple of things, because I was about to do my update. I want to be really clear with what I said earlier when I said that an applicant could go before the Z B A and pay Z B A fees and would likely be approved to put that stairwell in. I am one of five people and I was speaking for my own voice, not for the Z B A on that. I just want to be clear legally on that. The other thing is, in the meeting, it was very, very clear from the presenter, which was very engineering, that that space is going to be insulated and sheet rocked, but it is not a living space, it is a storage space. And so the letter that is going out in reference to that from the Z B A land use board can very clearly illustrate that.
I would like to see, you know, it needs to be on paper that it's it's storage area only, not a bedroom. Because we have some documents.
Wait until next meeting.
Yeah, I haven't drawn it up and resubmit.
Everybody is a present with them. I I don't know if we can go back and look at this, but um I should pull this off the consent agenda. The dry hole road application is adding a bedroom and it's has a class two.
But it's it's um existing living space that they're turning into a bedroom.
It says storage.
And so I think that's an important uh clarification that the select board wants to finish because uh my reading of the policy, the select board's policy, or my reading of the policy, doesn't it doesn't need to be a bedroom to be living space and it actually says dwelling space in the policy. And so, you know, when people have a season room or expand their living room, any finished space, we have had those applicants come in as category three. And so I think it would be important if, you know, and I know you haven't made a decision, but if your decision is to say, hey, come back to the next meeting uh, and we'll consider this application with documents that reflect what you're actually doing. Uh, I think it would be important first for the select board to make a determination about a finished and insulated conditioned space above a garage being storage, not being dwelling space. Uh, and, you know, I think one of the um, one of the things the select board discussed back in the development of the existing policy is the select board really wanted to draw a line in the sand of seasonal cottages that were being transformed into year round residences. And but there's no way to really pin down and say, okay, well, this is what happens or how it happens, which is why the select board chose talking about dwelling space and talking about volume and quantifying in a way that we could see at the time of the building permit application. As it relates to this project or other projects that are adding space that is going to be finished and conditioned, the if the use, we're not going to be able to uh police the use easily in the future. But understanding what is constructed is the information that's available to us now. And so the policy talks about dwelling space. And I think it'd be important for the select board to decide if finished space is dwelling space or if finished space can be not dwelling space and not subject to the category three requirements.
But in this case, it's been moving a storage area to a a bedroom, you know, a storage area which I presume doesn't change much as far as volume is concerned.
But it's not living space, right?
That's the, that's the, that was the question.
Does, it's my understanding that electrical and plumbing have to run through a living space. I mean, if I, if if you finish a basement, but all you've done is put up walls to keep your mechanical room aware away from, say, a playroom, but you haven't put heating in there, so you're not using it in the winter, you're just allowing your kids to, you know, paint down there and uh, you know, keep their toys stored down there. I I don't really I don't know, I don't know, like, I can remember as a child playing in the basement all the time and we had walls up that separated the mechanical and the washing machine and dryer, but I wouldn't have called it finished space.
Anything in the class six policy that references any of those kinds of definitions.
Would we change the policy to read dwelling space in conjunction with adding volume?
So I think changing the policy, let the committee work on that.
Okay.
We can point to this, you know, as an instance. I think the select board is is tasked with enforcing the policies that's written now, which talks about, you know, and I think the relative to the small road application, the pertinent uh sections are in the category two, it talks about new accessory buildings. Uh, which it's it's the basis, that's what this is. It's a new garage. Uh, and it defines those new accessory buildings as barns, sheds, and garages and in parentheses, containing no dwelling space and other non-human habitable building. And so I think it's clear from the plans that the first floor is a garage.
Yeah.
Uh, which which qualifies. I think what the question is, is the second floor, which right now is labeled as a bedroom and living space specifically. What was defined.
Was defined that the zoning board has storage only.
As as.
The question was asked twice, not once.
Right. And to be clear, the the zoning board has no role or responsibility in pre-review of class six and private road application. The only part of it that's relevant is that that answer was provided. I had a conversation with um one of the applicants today, um, to try to discern what the pa- packet for the select board said to what I heard from the planner was discussed with the zoning board meeting. And she confirmed that they're planning to use it for storage. It's, they're planning to finish it, but they're planning to use it for storage. And so the, but the section in category three talks about um uh erection of any new habitable building, um, addition of an accessory dwelling unit, which I think to the point about policing, you know, we don't know if it's a finished space. You don't know what the use is going to be. Um, you don't have to necessarily pull building permit to change the use of something. Uh, if it doesn't require building permit.
Well, the the essential is is going to want to know if it's an extra bedroom, that if some people just sell their house, you know, do they have a a five bedroom or do they have a four bedroom?
Yeah, I don't, but so I think the point, uh, the point I'm trying to get at about the policy and dwelling space is the policy doesn't say bedroom. The policy doesn't say it has to be a bedroom to be additional dwelling space or volume. And in the examples I've given, people have added a three season room to their house, not an additional bedroom, or even just expanded their living room. And that has been a category three dwelling space. And so dwelling space can be more than bedroom. It doesn't have to have a closet. It doesn't have to have running water. So the select board needs to define what dwelling space is as it relates to this application. Uh, so that they know that if they, you know, sign on the dotted line and say this, this isn't going to be a bedroom, but it's going to be insulated and finished and conditioned, is that good enough for it to be a category two application as long as the materials don't say that it's a bedroom and living area? Or does it have to be unfinished to to be considered with the garages, sheds and barns?
Well, in that discussion, the the word habitable will probably come up. Maybe space that you can throw a couch or, uh, you know, a potential bedroom and where you can, you know, sleep, because then that's going to require, uh, you know, heat and smoke detectors maybe, so.
So that's my question about um the dry hill application. It says on the front page that the applicant is renovating a storage space into a bedroom. So that to me sounds like going from garage to a dwelling space. So that should be a category three.
But is the store space already finished? And that was the sense that I got. I don't know the the details of the application, but I think, like I said, that's what matters.
It's already a dwelling space. It's happened to be used for storage.
Storage area, yeah.
It's a part of a finished part of a home.
See if it's any further. It doesn't exist in storage.
So this is.
In the same building.
And doesn't change the footprint for the size.
So one of the uh in the policy, the category three talks about erections to any new houses or buildings.
How is this?
So the the state statute, six seventy four forty one, when it talks about the select board's authority, it cites specifically the any permit for the the erection of a building. And we talked to the town's attorney a lot when we developed this policy to understand what the difference was when a permit was pulled for adjusting a habitable building versus the erection of a bedroom. And she underscored the importance of applying the road improvement requirements, which is the subject of six seventy four forty one for the erection of a building. And that's where we ended up with the three categories, where we had two before, having a a more clear pathway for applications that warrant the erection.
This is a room and it says the policy.
Right.
I'm I'm trying to figure out what we're being tasked with. The select board's trying to decide whether this is a category two or category three? What what are we being tasked with? Is that what we're being tasked with?
For me, there wasn't a lot of description here, um, to help me understand what their storage area.
Is the storage space heated? Is the storage space insulated?
The dry hill application, I think we're generally talking about the smaller application.
So, but it sounds to me like both of them are.
One's the erection of a building, one's an existing building.
And so are, is the suggestion that every time there's an erection of a building, it should be a category three?
No.
Okay.
Because it specifically says in category two, barns, sheds, garages, containing no dwelling space and other non-human habitable buildings.
Okay.
That's what allows.
So the I have not reviewed whether the same plans we received for Z B A said bedroom as they did for the planning board. I would have to go back.
This is select board and planning board review the same document.
Okay, so I would have to go back and ask for a copy of what came before Z B A in order to.
Well, the select board has to decide based on the information that they're giving. Which is the packet that said bedroom and living room. And so the sense that I got was the select board wanted to see updated materials which accurately reflect what they're asking for.
So that it reads storage space.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that it reads storage space, correct? And you've confirmed that with the homeowner.
Yes.
So they need to resubmit.
Right, but I think when they resubmit, I think it will be important for the select board to decide, and this is to your point about category two, category three. If they resubmit with a garage that lists, that shows a finished and conditioned space above the garage, a finished and conditioned room above the garage, is the select or to the select board, is that dwelling space that is a category three? Or is it category two under the accessory buildings, barns, sheds, garages, containing no dwelling space and other non-human habitable buildings?
So it's not well, I agree it's not well defined, but do and we don't know about this specifically, is it heated? I mean, heating is going to be a big one. Is it, you know, some of these other features that might imply whether.
Garage, right, you don't put plumbing in a garage.
Do you need plumbing for two dwellers?
I feel like you do. I mean.
But you can put on like sunroofs and three season porches and stuff without plumbing, right?
I, I guess.
But you go back to have, and you take that, can you sleep there? Can you have somebody there? If anybody can wake up and go, you know, down the stairs into the house.
Aren't there she sheds and man sheds all over the place where people have run an electrical cord and they're sitting out there on a fall day with an electrical heating source enjoying quiet away from their spouse?
It's, it's, it's a lake house. So it's a lake house. So it becomes a bunkhouse, right? Above a garage. If it's finished space, it's a bunkhouse if you're on a lake. Easily.
Yeah. And I think the point is regard that we're looking at what it's, what the building permit application is for. And we have to think to the future about future use and make sure that we apply the the requirements that should exist based on the permit that they're asking for. Knowing that the use may change, but where the line is. And so the policy saying dwelling space and volume, you know, those are, you know, not dissimilar to what the select were considered with Birch Lane project in determining issue waiver. So it's up to you, but I want to be able to tell the applicants what category they should be applying under so that they don't reapply. And the select board says, no, this is actually category three.
Boy, this is a really gray area.
This is a very gray area. And I would like to point out that it, so even if they built the garage, I mean, I have a garage with an extremely tall just to keep the roof line so it didn't look bizarre next to my home that is elevated. I could, I never have, but I could easily throw stuff up there and make it storage. I have a barn in my backyard that I use to park a John Deere tractor in that could, you know, become a she shed. I, I, I think, I think we may be overthinking it to some degree, like.
We have a class five town in hand road. And that's the difference. That's why the select board sees this application.
Right.
I think I would, because it's not clearly defined enough. I think what we would need to do is ask them to be specific about what they plan for the space. You know, if it's not bedroom, they should take off bedroom from their submittal. And they should specify that they don't plan to use that for dwelling. Like they don't plan to sleep and, and house people there, but it's just for storage. And we're not in the business of arguing what people are going to use their space for. And so until it's more clearly defined in our updated policy, we can only really go by what they're saying.
And when I talked to the property owner today, I, anticipating how to move this forward or to clear up the gray area, I asked, I said, you know, would you be willing to sign some of the select board indicating the use based on what was talked about the zoning board? And she indicated that that wouldn't be a problem. So that might be a solution that clears it up.
Yeah. And the ZBA letter going out indicating that any space above the two parking spots in the garage is considered storage space only. The letter has not been completed, signed yet.
Yep.
So what I'm hearing is please resubmit with documents accurately reflect the use for the space and a letter indicating that the space above the garage won't be used as dwelling space.
First.
Right.
And but the other application, they have a space in a house. We're looking at that differently.
So that's a three.
No, it's already counted.
Well, we said on the consent agenda tonight as a two.
Is it a two though?
It's not an erection of a building. That's the.
That's what I was questioning.
So it's a remodel which is similar to Birch Lane.
It's an interior remodel. It's not.
Stairs, they're taking a room and making it a bedroom.
In the house.
Well, it, it, it takes, you have to look at the plan, but there's not really a description.
Frankly, I mean, if you had any extra room outside of square footage, because once again, that was our big discussion earlier, square footage, it was adding volume to the top. You're not going out, but, you know, they're adding it maybe they're welcoming a newborn, who knows?
But they're adding square footage limits.
No, the square footage is the same.
So the gym spaces, because it was only storage before.
But they could be living in it now and they just want to update it as well, you know, that somebody could kick a top.
I can be consistent in how I look at these.
And I hope our, our team that integrated, we assembled, you know, take these into consideration.
Both have select board representative or representative.
Yes.
Yeah.
So in category two, it talks about improvements or replacements of existing buildings, which the dry hill one would be where the volume footprint remain the same. And that's where the volume comes in. When you add dorm or that adds the volume. But the for dry hill, the footprint and the volume are staying the same. And it's not an erection.
It's just reconfiguring the inside.
It's $4,300. Basically, they were doing what? Sheet rocking?
Yeah, sounds like.
That sounds like about what you could accomplish. Some paint maybe.
Maybe a closet, you know? And then that then technically makes it a bedroom.
It looks like they're, they have an environmental advantage system already in place that. I'm assuming that our.
So I think we have the decision for the small road application. It, it was on the consent agenda. It wasn't public hearings. I don't think that you need to continue it. I think the select board can take no action and revisit it at the June 12 meeting unless you want.
We pulled it off consent agenda, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So let's move on. Select board, if member reports a concern, Dravy?
Well, it won't surprise you that the ZBA heard one case and it was on small road. I'm not sure I need to expand anymore than I've already shared on that. So moving on.
Conservation met May 11th. Doug Bogan was elected as chair and replaces Ken Grossman, who will also remain participating with the board. They've just been reviewing various developments, proposals, discussing monitoring. I mentioned to them about the kayak launch possibilities for Ayers and Richardson's Pond. Town lands met on the 20th. Couple important things on that. They're looking to relocate their meeting to the town hall here in the small conference room. If that's okay with you guys. I don't think there's much competition Saturday mornings at 7:30. So should be available.
They ever did choose to record, it can be done.
Yeah, a lot of reasons to do that. And it frees up the space for the safety building people. The next meeting with them is going to be June 17th, and it's going to be at the highway garage in order to walk the property behind, because they're trying to figure out from the town foresters' plan, any potential for foresting the land behind the highway garage and such. There's a lot of wetland and access issues to get back there. So they're not sure how feasible that's going to be, but they're working on that. Yeah, yeah. And they're also planning some walks around the back of Goodwill to just to explore the forestries, the town foresters' recommendations for potential foresting there as well. That's about it.
Both the school board and library on Tuesday, I'm doing a ten meeting meeting.
That was the way that it started.
All it happens, the school board, the school board did discuss their new disciplinary program. They formalized their program. I'm not sure what the library trust is going to do more regularly. And the transfer station ABC did not need to organize meetings.
Just kind of add one thing. Both the conservation commission and town lands, big topics of discussion in both groups of recent meetings are the town forest. And there are adjacent parcels to the town forest privately owned. And there's discussion about whether or not those might be sold, whether conservation might want to buy them, whether, you know, we double the size of the town forest. Anyway, those are kind of complicated, ongoing conversations, and both groups are talking and working together and even talking about maybe having some combined site blocks. That's important.
I did not make it to the technology meeting. Connor touched on it earlier. They're still working on trying to get the fiber rolling. I spoke with Jesse last week. Summer camps are getting ready to get into swing here. They are indeed looking for some new knowledge. So check out them on the website. And they met with the library as well and had some talks about the potential of working together with the new space setup. And that's about it.
Thank you. In my report, I was not able to attend the last planning board meeting as I was out of town. All right. Moving on, public comment. Please come up to the meeting.
Nathan Gray, three, four, five, Dry Hill Road, Arlington, Hampshire. I'm not sure. I'm trying to read over the commentary there to see where I should. Was a lot of, we're just trying to bring some clarification to our project. I know not for the policy. I understand that there's a policy decisions that you guys have to make and to bring clarification to it, two different applicants, myself and another one. But our space is, it might show a garage in the plan, but there's a, just the main door going into the space. It's heated. It's dry walled. There's a door to go up the stairs to get to the apartment above. And I think that you kind of hit on a little bit. It's not adding any additional space, not constructing new space. It's already, with my understanding, already a kind of existing dwelling area.
Madam Chairperson, was this approved in the consent agenda?
Yeah. Okay. And that's why I just wanted to see too, is understand and catch the full part there. So.
Yes.
I mean, there was just the sentence there. So that's, it's one of the ways.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Being here. Yeah. So what are you doing?
Other public comment?
I'm David Watt. I missed what actually happened on the committee for the class six and private room.
Well, thank God you stayed for this whole thing because.
But it was, it was very enlightening what you're dealing with, with some of these applications and how you're looking at the challenges of.
The challenges ahead to make this very clear.
Of course. And as a past member of the planning board, we've, I've dealt with that for a number of years. So I'm quite well aware of that, but that's why I've stuck around. And I just introduced myself. So face goes with the name.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
So was, was this the vote for the members? Was that part of the movement? That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yes.
Now you know who I am.
Yeah. Yes, you will.
I will. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No, I'm not really. I just, for a little bit of clarification, going back on the two. At way back in the day when we did the first classic right go agreement and intent behind this policy we have now is when we looked at from the public safety standpoint is, and I still feel pretty strongly about that. If you're, if you're creating a garage or a barn or a she shed, he shed, whatever, that you're not creating impact on that private road, there's less of an issue. But if you're adding living space that potentially allows for added traffic because you're putting in lower apartment hall or you're.
Going year round.
Making, making it year round. That was really the intent behind this policy from the very get go was have a trigger in place to require improvements to the road for public safety. If you've got three people living on the road, it's not such a big deal. But now all of a sudden, there's six and there's 10 and there's 15 and there's 20. And there's no trigger to provide adequate improvements for the road gap. That was the intent behind the original policy and why this was upgraded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody online, hands up?
Do we have any reason to be in on?
I do not.
Tracy?
Hi.
Bye.
Bye. Look at it.
Happy Halloween. Meeting adjourned.